All right. Welcome, everybody, to this December nineteen, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Homewood City Council. We're going to start tonight with a couple of proclamations, the first to Judge Elizabeth French. Mr. Mayor, I'll turn this on over to you.
Thank you so much.
Judge French, if you would join me up front. Courtney, you are welcome to stand up here as well, or you can take pictures afterwards, or whatever you would like to do. Got the correct one? Yes, it's the very long one, because you were so esteemed. So I will read this. I'll read this that way. They all they all know that we face this. So whereas Judge Elizabeth French is the presiding judge for the Tenth Judicial Court of Alabama. Judge French is the first female presiding judge in Jefferson County and the first African-American female presiding judge in the state of Alabama. Judge Elizabeth Judge Elizabeth French was elected by the Jefferson County Circuit Judges in February of two thousand and twenty as presiding judge. She was reelected to that position by her colleagues in January of two thousand and twenty-two. As presiding judge, she is responsible for assigning judges to establish divisions, executing administrative duties of the courts, and has supervisory authority over court officials and other personnel to ensure that the courts function properly. And whereas Judge Elizabeth French received the Judicial Award of Merit in two thousand and nineteen from the Alabama State Bar Association. The Judicial Award of Merit is given to the judge who has contributed significantly to the administration of justice in Alabama. She is a member of the Court of the Judiciary Judiciary, which handles disciplinary matters regarding other judges. She was appointed to that position by the Alabama Circuit Judges Association. She is one of only two circuit judges appointed to that court and was the first African American African American male judge to serve in that role. Did my voice just change all of a sudden? Was it? Did we pick up a mic on that? So whereas Judge Elizabeth French has disposed of thousands of cases during her tenure on the bench. Her responsibilities include presiding over jury trials, bench trials, all hearings, motion dockets, status conferences, and appeals from the Personnel Board, Probate Court, and District Court. Judge French presides over a wide variety of civil cases, including but not limited to workers' compensation, personal injury, product liability, wrongful death, commercial disputes, breach of contract cases, property disputes, employment disputes, collection cases, ejectments, foreclosures, unemployment disputes, forfeitures from criminal matters, and tax appeals. Whereas Judge Elizabeth French entered the private practice of law in nineteen ninety-seven and represented clients in the areas of education law and general civil litigation. In nineteen ninety-nine, she began litigating complex civil cases. She managed state and federal cases ranging from medical malpractice actions to mass tort litigation, including diet drug litigation, hormone therapy cases, Vioxx, Celebrex, and Bextra. And whereas Judge Elizabeth French is a member of the American Bar Association, the National Bar Association, the Birmingham Bar Association, the Magic City Bar Association, and Alabama Lawyers Association. She has served as president, vice president, treasurer, and secretary of ALA. She is, excuse me. She served as chair of the ALA Judicial Council. Judge French is a member of the Alabama Association of Circuit Judges, where she served on the Education Committee. Judge French served on the Alternative Dispute Resolution Committee for the Alabama Supreme Court. She serves on the Technology Technology Commission for the Alabama Supreme Court currently. She's on the Executive Board for the Birmingham Bar Women's Section. She hosts and volunteers for multiple legal clinics throughout Jefferson County and hosts mock trials for students in Jefferson County. Judge French is a graduate and faculty member of the National Judicial College. She's a member of the UAB Minority Health Advisory Board and graduate of Leadership Birmingham. She served on the University of Montevallo's Foundation Board. She served on the Children's Dance Foundation and is currently a board member for the Southern Dance Works. Now, therefore, I, Patrick McCluskey, mayor of the city of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby express my sincere appreciation to Judge Elizabeth French and her and highly commend her for the manner in which she carries out her duties and responsibilities. So congratulations.
That's a lot. That's a lot. Maybe we don't know.
Sure, and then I'll jump in and also John Arden will also be.
Absolutely.
All right, one, two, three.
About to say, if somebody else needs to bring the picture, why don't you stand next to your wife?
Warm up.
One, two, three.
And Judge, you are welcome to say a few words if you want.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
To Mayor McCluskey and all the councilors, thank you so much for this. I really appreciate it. You know, judges are required to live in the county in which they serve, and the law requires that such that we can be invested in our communities. And it it really means a lot to me to be recognized by my my personal community, by my neighbors and my friends in Homewood. And I am cognizant of my investment in the city of Homewood. My children go to school here, of course, I live here, shop here, eat here. My friends are here, my neighbors are here. And I just really appreciate being honored in in the community in which I live. I strive to represent you well. As I go about my daily responsibilities, I am cognizant of the need to strive for excellence in everything I do on the court in both my administrative roles and my role on the bench. So I thank you for for this recognition. It means a lot to me. Mayor, thank you again for reading that long. I'm gonna give you a short bio next time. Thank you so much. Merry Christmas, and I just I really appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge French.
We've got one more?
We have to. We do have one more. This is for Arbor Day. This is something that actually should have been done a couple of months ago, but we just have just now have the proclamation. So whereas the city of Homewood acknowledges that a healthy urban forest composed of significant portion of native trees is vital to public health and sound infrastructure, civic pride, and the economic and aesthetic value of the city. Whereas the presence of an urban forest, when properly managed as a part of a comprehensive landscape plan, will promote soil conservation, reduce flooding, improve air and water quality, reduce noise pollution, provide a buffer between residents and businesses, and increase property values. And whereas the city of Homewood finds it finds that it is in the public interest and welfare of the citizens present and future to promote the protection of trees throughout the city. And whereas Green Skies Over Homewood is an annual native tree replenishment initiative run by the Homewood Environmental Commission. Whereas Arbor Day is observed throughout the nation and the world. Now, therefore, I, Patrick McCluskey, mayor of the city of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby proclaim the month of November as Green Skies Over Homewood Month and the first Saturday of the month of November as Arbor Day in the city and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to organize or join in activities planned throughout the month of November, such as the Green Skies Over Homewood Tree Plantings, seed collection activities, and tree education programs as organized by the Homewood Environmental Commission and other efforts to protect our trees and urban forest. So that's it. We'll sign this and get this over to the Coalition, and they'll get it.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. With that done, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask Ms. Salter to do our invocation, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
Yes, I guess I had to do a city clerk invocation the other day last Wednesday. So Amy that works in T. Clark's office found this. I thought I would say Ms. Smith and Mr. Jones, I'd do it again. So if you would, this is a Christmas blessing by Wilder English. Bow your heads. God grant you the light of Christmas, which is faith, the warmth of Christmas, which is purity, the righteousness of Christmas, which is justice, the belief in Christmas, which is truth, and the awe of Christmas, which is Christ. Thank you. Hope you have a great Christmas.
Everyone, face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and every small liberty.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Ms. Salter, if you will, please call roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Walton.
Here.
Counselor Gier. Counselor Alamon.
Here.
Counselor Wolverton.
Here.
Counselor Sims. Counselor Jones.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Nelms.
Here.
Counselor Andrus.
Here.
Counselor Harden.
Here.
And President Wyatt.
Here.
You got two absentees, you still have a quorum. You have nine present.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our regular council meeting of December twelve, two thousand and twenty-two. Those have been previously distributed. I would entertain a motion and a second to dismiss with the reading of those minutes and for approval of the same. Motion.
Second.
Mister Wolverton, second from Ms. Smith, all in favor. Any opposed? As approved, nine to zero. We don't have any board vacancies tonight. We do have a few additions to the agenda. We'll start with the additions to old business. First, one, first addition is oh, one, twelve, twenty-two, request to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement and remit fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget appropriation with the city with the Homewood Chamber of Commerce, brought to us by Robert Forget and Melody Salter. Next item, oh, two, twelve, twenty-two, request to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement to remit fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget appropriation with the Exceptional Foundation, brought to us by Robert Forget and Melody Salter. Next, we will have an item added to other new business. This is thirteen, twelve, twenty-two, request to authorize the mayor to sign a change order and expend funds related to the College Avenue Project, brought to us by Kale Smith. And then finally, one item to add to the committee referral agenda, fourteen, twelve, twenty-two, request to add ceasefire cabinet site at Homewood Soccer Complex, brought to us by Berkeley Squires. So with all of those additions, I would entertain a motion, a second for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion for a second. Motion from Ms. Smith, a second from Mister Walton, all in favor.
That was actually Julie.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion by Ms. Nelms, second by Mister Walton, all in favor. Any opposed? As approved, nine to zero.
President.
Yes, sir.
That last item you you read off, what what committed was that?
Oh, I'm sorry, you'll go to finance.
Okay, thank you.
This is hard. Well. So it's five minutes, but. I I think it I think it was going to finance, because I think they're they are paying us.
That's correct.
So I believe that's why it's going to finance. I don't think it has to go to both, but if if everyone wants it to go to both, but it definitely has to go to finance because of the money. So I would say let's just.
And if Berkeley is saying that he's allowing it, then.
Right. So what I would say is let's start with finance. If there's some reason to circulate it back towards another committee, then we'll do that then.
I didn't mean to cause controversy.
In the Christmas season, no less. All right. There is nothing on the consent agenda tonight, so we will move on to old business. First item, fifteen, oh, six, twenty-two, request for permission to work within the right of way on Ree Street, Sixteenth Street, and the alley surrounding seventeen, oh, seven Ree Street, brought to us by Kale Smith. This was already reported out by Public Works back in October. And I believe we have, I see Mister Gonzalez out there, who I'm assuming is representing the developer tonight. Let me start with this, just so everyone understands. Due to a recent purchase of the vet clinic right there, I now have to recuse myself. So because of a family member that works for the company that purchased the vet clinic. So I will still obviously administer the item, but I will not be speaking to it or voting on it as a result of that recent purchase, which is why, yes, earlier I spoke to him, but not now. Yeah, Noel Daniels was purchased by a company that my daughter works for. So with that, Ms. Smith, do you know where we are with this?
I do. So first of all, thank you, Mister Gonzalez, for being here, because Mister Shannon is actually out of the country. He left with his family for a holiday vacation out of the country. So Mister Gonzalez is here representing the developer tonight. Shaq Lynn and Trip Galloway and I met last Thursday, had a very productive meeting, kind of taking all of the all of the issues into consideration and having a very productive discussion. And we have now come to the point where we are ready to move forward with the work in the right of way portion or the item about the work in the right of way. So we'll let Mister Gonzalez speak to that. He can give us the updates, the latest.
Come on up, Mister Gonzalez. If you will, sign in while you're up there.
All right. And Mark.
Yes, ma'am.
Brian should have the it might not be completely up to date, but he should have these from our previous meetings, right, Brian? To put up on the screens. Yeah.
That that is the most recent.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good. Yes. So let me sign this, because I can only do one thing at a time effectively. All right, again, most of y'all know me, some of y'all may not, but I'm Martin Azos. Azos Strength and Associates, fifteen, fifty Woods River Drive Drive Hoover, Alabama. Civil engineer for the project, been working with Lynn since the inception of this project. It goes back a lot longer than October, to be honest. What we're what we're asking for today, what we're working on is a multi-tenant, multi-use, mixed-use commercial development to be situated off of Ree Street with access to Central. Well, we've come to develop, what we've come here in front of you for is to ask for the right to open up, that would be Sixteenth Court, do some work on Ree Street that we're proposing at the top of the page, which we have coordinated with your lighting plan, street scape, sidewalk plan up there, and also to do improvements of the alley to the rear. It's the first step of what we need is that is it today is the most critical step that we have, because we don't get past this hurdle, then we don't have a project. If we get past this hurdle where we can effectively open up Sixteenth, do the work on Reese and do the alley, then we'll move to the next steps with working with the landscape architect, arborist, and things of that nature, and have to go through a bunch of other steps to satisfy the, you know, the form of ordinances and other things that we have to. But this is our most critical step today, and it's the one that we're asking for approval of.
And and let me jump in, just because Trip and Lynn and I discussed this. The. Bless you. The little white kind of bulb out toward Central in the Sixteenth Court. I wish I had a pointer, I can't point to it. Right, yes, right there. That is currently the that is currently the location of, oh, perfect. Yeah, there you go. That is perfectly, that is currently the location of a power pole that is that supplies the power to Central Avenue Dentistry. Alabama Power has agreed to relocate that pole. I believe it's going to go up into the front corner of the building. I think that's right. Somewhere, yeah, somewhere in that general, right, yeah, yeah, it's currently there, and it's moving over here. And they're, that is going to be at Alabama Power's expense, and they are also going to reconnect the power lines, obviously, back to the business. And the hope is that we would be able to gain an additional parking space there. And there's also the very first space adjacent to Central Avenue Dentistry is going to be a handicapped accessible space. And that space, as we discussed in our meeting, that's going to essentially be a space that's going to be designated for the dentist's office, because no one who has a physical handicap is going to park all the way down here to access the businesses there, because they're they're going to have their own parking, their own handicap spaces adjacent to those buildings. So that very first space will be a handicapped accessible space. And then hopefully, if the power poles moved and and out of the way, and we get another space there, the hope is that there will be, is that right, Mark, twenty spaces? And that's because I think they were nineteen, and then we'll be hopefully adding that one.
Let me just double check. I can't read that one, but certainly can read this one.
It it. No, the the it's going to be twenty spaces just in that red section.
That's right. That's correct.
Both the angled spots, and then there are a couple of parallel spots over against the dentist, I mean, the veterinarian office parking lot.
You know, we'll have to take a look at the handicap accessible aisle, make sure that all works out, that may take one space.
Well, yeah, we talked about that, and then Kale and I, in a much earlier iteration of this whole project and process, we had talked about the op the option of, because we were talking about a handicap space there, that there's some ability to maybe go into, right, Kale, correct me if I'm wrong. We have, there's a grass strip there between the parking space and the sidewalk. And we had discussed the the possibility of going into that, taking in that grass area to move it further that way, to maybe not take away another space.
You're saying is I need to try and get twenty spaces in there.
That'd be awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Understood.
That would be the that would be the goal. So that's that's my two cents to add to this whole shebang.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Question, did y'all decide, I know there were discussion about the restaurant. Did you decide not to move forward with the restaurant, or has that decision been made yet?
That decision has not been made. We 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 have programmed a small space for restaurants somewhere around two thousand, twenty-five hundred square feet. And we're working with zoning codes and parking requirements to make sure that we do provide adequate spaces. But if that doesn't happen, then, you know, we'll we'll be able to park at that point.
Okay. Yeah. Lynn told Trip and I their their desire would be to have a restaurant in the space, but they have no commitments to this point of, well, any of the businesses, but they have not, they don't have any commitments. But that is their hope, is that they have one restaurant space.
Part of that programming was utilizing to have your parking count required, but we're not going to take any parking spaces away.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I believe a long time ago, this came out of came out with a motion from Public Works, but it's been so long. I think it probably makes sense if someone would be willing to make a motion in a second, if they're so inclined, just because of how long it's been sitting out. And and we've kind of gone through a couple iterations of it.
Yes. Yeah, it has changed. I would make a motion to approve the work in the right of way with all of the proper indemnification agreements.
Yeah, let me let me make sure there's a, let me make sure there's a second first, and then I'm going to let Mark answer that question. Second from Ms. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mister Jones. Now, Mark, if you will, answer that question.
We got the Sixteenth Street, we got improvements that we'll be doing on Reese, and then we got the alley behind it. So there's three, there's three rideaways. Actually, there's four rideaways touching this piece of property, because the Bell Center behind us has a right of way, that's parallel. But the three that we're working in are Sixteen, Reese, and the alley.
Okay.
There's also a promenade easement.
As shown in green.
Green, that can supply access to Texas, sixteen, three, public park. And the green is also that. That runs with the land with the corner.
Is that proper?
Well, I send though, I send before I send.
All right.
It's always been.
Yes. All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any?
Abstain.
Hold on. One more time. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions.
Staying.
Abstain. So that is six to zero to three.
And abstentions are you, Harden, or what was it?
And Alamon. So that will be resolution twenty-two to eighteen. All right. Next item, oh, five, oh, five, twenty-two, public hearing set for December twelve, twenty twenty-two, six P. M., for vacation of right of way. Is that right? Was it on the twelve?
Um, actually, yeah, you opened it. Well, it was.
Oh, we closed.
We closed it.
It opened earlier.
It opened way earlier, but yes, it closed on the twelve.
Got it. All right. So a public hearing that was closed on December twelve, two thousand and twenty-two, for vacation of right of way of Sixteenth Street adjacent to twenty-nine, oh, one Central Avenue, brought to us by Lee and Chelsea Maniscalco and Wyatt Pugh. Special issues has already reported this one out. Same deal with regard to the my abstention, but Ms. Smith, if you, do you want to take this one as well?
Um, sure. This is kind of, it's not the same item, but is adjacent and in combination with. And like I said, Mister Galloway and Mister Shannon and I met last Thursday and discussed all of the moving elements. There are a lot of moving parts with this. Mister Shannon told us in that meeting, obviously, with the current state of interest rates and construction materials and just construction, everything in general. This is probably something that is going to be a while. So in that that vein, we discussed, you know, there's just a lot of moving parts and a lot of unknowns with this. So I'm going to let Mister Galloway go from there. We did close the public hearing last week, right, last week? Yeah, last week. And so Mister Galloway is, I'll let him tell you where we are.
Thank you. I'm going to follow Mister Gonzalez's lead, and I learned my lesson a couple of years ago. I walked off with this and was paced down, so if I can sign it and then talk, that will work well. Thank you. Um, we're, I would say we are, has been fairly accurately characterized previously by Ms. Smith and Mister Gonzalez. The, given the timing, and one thing that that a light bulb went on for me in that meeting was that from Mister Shannon and the power company standpoint, something has had to go first. You know, they they had to get a drainage plan approved, they had to get variances, had to do subdivisions, or they had to get the right to work in the right of way first. And the most logical first domino at the end of the day was to get the right to work in the public right of way. Doesn't mean that that will happen next week or anytime in the immediate near future, but that was the first domino that had to fall. And Lynn, to me, did a nice job of presenting that persuasively. The Meniscalco stand by that they would, in an ideal world, be willing to initiate and fund a vacation of the subject area next to the Central Avenue Dentistry to assure themselves parking and grant an easement for right of way. But for the time being, they are in accord that it is, it is appropriate under the circumstances for their motion to vacate, if procedurally possible, to be tabled until there the dominos fall one way or the other on the development of this power company and Lynn Shannon project. And it may be that we're mooted, or it may be that it doesn't come to pass, in which case, the one of the hurdles we would have to meet in a vacation petition, which would be that it is appropriately characterized as surplus property, would, there would be a better case for that, because a developer would have had a meaningful attempt to develop and use that parcel, and it didn't, and it didn't come to fruition. So we would ask, and the spirit of cooperation has been very significant from the city and from Mister Shannon, that that we would be tabled, if possible, in in court, like in this Judge French's.
You want to be put on the administrative.
Administrative doctrine is the term of art.
So just then, and I'll be, feel free to continue to speak, but I think just procedurally, what we would probably do is send it back to special issues to put on the table in committee, and then the committee, whenever or if ever it needs to be heard, then it committee could be heard at committee and sent back to council at that point. I think would be the appropriate procedure.
Right. I would agree. I would agree. And the the other thing that I would note is that when the two depictions were shown on the screen during the the prior matter, the first one showed a patio seating area for a potential restaurant spot, and it was not in the second one. That is a meaningful difference in terms of of parking count. And it is my understanding that the last reiteration that was shared with me from Lynn was that there was not a seating area for outside.
Yes, no, that that was when, I can't remember at what point in the process, because it has gone through, like you said, multiple variations. But they did remove that outdoor seating area and put more parking where it would have been. I think it added, I can't remember, four, four or five spaces, I think.
That's one.
Yeah. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So anyway, just there was, I noted that discrepancy, so I just want to point that out. And but I do want to say, I think there's been a tremendous example of good government by Homewood on how it has addressed this and allowed the parties, the interested parties to be participants, to try to craft a way, and I think that for for the time being, that it's been achieved, and I commend you on it.
Thank you very much, Mister Galloway. Then we will send this. Then we will send this back to special issues and it will appear on the special issues agenda next week, but everybody knows there's really not going to be anything done. We're just going to put it on the table at that point. On the third, excuse me, not next week, not even close to next week, but didn't want y'all to think anything about it being on the agenda. So that's it. It just has to go on there to get to the table. So thank you all very much. We appreciate all of your willingness to have continue conversations and Mr. Gonzalez as well. All right. So next item, oh, one, twelve, twenty-two, request to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement and remit fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget appropriations with this with the Homewood Chamber of Commerce brought to us by Robert Brigitte and Melody Salter and a report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met tonight and voted five to zero for approval of this item.
All right. So we have a motion from finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved nine to zero and be resolution twenty-two to nineteen. Next item, oh, two, twelve, twenty-two, request to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement to remit fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget appropriations with the Exceptional Foundation. Also brought to us by Robert Brigitte and Melody Salter and another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, voted five to zero for approval of this item.
All right. Another motion from finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also nine to zero and be resolution twenty-two to twenty. Which brings us to the amended committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and second for approval of that amended committee referral agenda.
So move second.
A motion by Miss Andress, second by Miss Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved nine to zero. Which brings us to other new business. First item, ten, twelve, twenty-two, request to set a public hearing for consideration to rezone thirty-one oh, one Overton Drive from N P D to R seven. This is brought to us by Jenny Allen to permit the construction of a four unit townhome development. The planning commission has already reviewed this and had a vote of zero to seven unfavorable recommendation. So we will set that public hearing for January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. Next item, eleven, twelve, twenty-two, request to change January meeting dates due to New Year's and Martin Luther King Day. Council dates to be held on January nine, twenty twenty-three and January thirty, twenty twenty-three and committee dates to be held on January three, twenty twenty-three and January twenty-three, twenty twenty-three. This item is brought to the council by myself. It's a lot of threes. All right. So I would entertain a motion and second for approval.
Second.
All right. Motion from Mr. Jones, second from Miss Nelms. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also approved and will be twenty-two to twenty-one. Our numbers tonight. All right. Next item, twelve, twelve, twenty-two, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of December thirteen, twenty twenty-two through December nineteen, twenty twenty-two, brought to us by Robert Brigitte and Melody Salter. This is still Mr. Gualley?
It is. Yes, sir, Mr. President. Review the vouchers this afternoon, had a couple of questions and they were answered appropriately. No issues. I was glad to see that the dog named Pug for life found a home that we picked up. So that is one of the best parts of reviewing, the most fun part of reviewing the invoices is the the nicknames given to the dogs that come through from animal control. So it's great. But I would make a motion for approval with no issues.
All right. Motion from Mr. Gualley, second from Miss Smith. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As nine to zero and be resolution twenty-two to twenty-two. All right. Last item, thirteen, twelve, twenty-two, request to authorize the mayor to sign a change order related to the College Avenue project brought to us by Kale Smith. Mr. Smith is here. I will just do a little bit of a preview. This is the project that's going on out in front of Edgewood and timing is a big factor because we're trying to get as much done as we can during and hopefully the whole project done before the kids get back in school at Edgewood. So that's the reason why it went here and did not go to committee. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Smith.
Thank you, President Wyatt. And yes, you're right. So I know that you guys don't like to typically operate like this, but with a sense of urgency to try to get College Avenue open, reopen before school gets back in on January the fourth. It's the reason why it's here. So some background, we bid this project in early September. The council approved a resolution up to seven hundred and fifty-four five twenty-eight for the project and then I negotiated with the contractor and it the the contract amount came down to seven twenty-one eighty. So there's a difference there of thirty-four thousand, three forty-eight between what the council approved and what the contract actually is. So this change order doesn't require a budget amendment. The actual change order. I don't have a role plan at this point, but is to relocate a water line, relocate not in the left or right direction, but the vertical direction. So the survey didn't pick up the water line on the survey and even if it would have, we wouldn't have known the depth of it. So right now our storm pipe where it's proposed conflicts with where the water line is. So we'll do this. We'll relocate the water line vertically and go above our The other change order is this utility pole to be relocated next to eight eighteen College. We thought we might be able to hold the pole in place while we put pipe in the ground, but the contractor, once he looked at it and realized what it's going to take to excavate and and lay back the trench, he realized that it's going to be pretty unsafe to do that. So they just want to move it out of the way. And it'll also be better for the homeowner because it will be away from this house. So it's going to move down the page toward the fence. The prices to do all of these things are fifteen thousand for the water line relocation and eleven thousand, six fifty-seven sixty-two for the utility pole relocation for a grand total of twenty-six thousand, six hundred fifty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. So the revised contract amount will be seven forty-six, eight thirty-seven, sixty-two, and you've already approved up to seven fifty-four, five twenty-eight for the project. Good job, Kale.
All right.
Is that clear or not?
All right. Any questions or comments? Not entertain a motion and second.
Second.
Motion from Miss Smith, second from Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Those as approved nine to zero and will be resolution twenty-two to twenty-three. Thank you, Mr. Smith. All right. And that is the end of the agenda. So, Mr. Mayor.
Just really quick, thank you for approving that change order, the multiple phone calls that I know Walter and I have received from that area of town are very appreciative of it. And I know that Dr. Heffner and the entire school system would appreciate getting all of that done before the the start of school again in January. So thank you guys for doing that. Simply just want to wish everybody a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, everything else. And you should have, I'll see a cooler in front of Andrew there. So Merry Christmas to each one of you. I appreciate everything that y'all do every single day. So that's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gualley.
I need to set public safety following finance. Our first meeting. I don't have any additional comments except for I'm very sad to hand off the baton on the few of the invoices to Counselor Alamon. But I'm happy to help if you need anything. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Alma.
I'd like to thank Counselor Gualley for passing the baton. You know, I just want to say happy holidays, Merry Christmas. You know, as we have now concluded, like we I've concluded my first two years on council, I just want to say it's an extraordinary privilege to serve with all of you. I've learned a lot from all of you and it's great to be able to serve in this capacity with folks who are so passionate and committed to their city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton.
Kale, do you know the right of way item twenty-five, ten, Eighteenth Street South? That's on the referral agenda. Is that something that's ready to move move forward?
Yes.
Okay. I know a couple of times things have come in. Okay, okay. So we will set Public Works. Public Safety is not meeting, is that correct?
They are.
They are. Sorry.
So it'll be after Public Safety.
Yes, I I would definitely second Counselor Alamon's comments about learning the ins and outs of the city and you know, I I do want to give a quick shout out to Randy Hamley. I know that we can all appreciate Randy and his responsiveness. I noticed this morning that the street sign and stop sign where Scott Street and Oak Oxmore, Little Oxmore meet, were laying over on the edge of the street. And I don't know when when that took place sometime between yesterday, when I drove by and this morning. And I gave Randy a quick quick message about it. I'm not I'm not kidding. Ten, twelve minutes later, Randy was out front putting the putting the signs back up and you know, I I think we have a great city and we have a lot of fantastic people that work here and we just appreciate everything that everybody does here and also everybody's dedication to the city that's up here working. And then I do want to say happy anniversary to my wife, Trista. Today is actually our anniversary, so we are looking forward to a a great evening together and we might be sharing some of that with you guys. So all right. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The finance will be at five and I apologize for missing the last meeting. But I did want to thank Ms. Salter and your staff for a really great parade. Thank you, Mayor. It was just a really fun parade this year. So thank you for that and it's just good to good to serve with all of you and hope everyone has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and I'll see you back soon.
Thanks very much. Miss Smith.
So on Friday, Jennifer and JJ and myself and Donna Burgess, who is a Homewood resident and serves on our Jefferson County Mental Health Authority. She's also going to be serving as the president this upcoming year. We were able to tour the Craig Crisis Care Center, which is part falls under the Jefferson County Mental Health Authority. And it is on what's it called? Beacon Crest Parkway, sorry, West. So it's very close to our city limits. It's not very far from our police headquarters. And it's a really exciting thing. They're going to be providing some really interesting services. They are going to have fourteen to sixteen extended stay beds, which is a maximum of five days. Thirty-two temporary spots for that where people can stay for up to twenty-three hours. This is for people who are experiencing mental health crises and sometimes drug issues as well. It's going to be a big help for our our police officers. They have a secure entrance for law enforcement where they can bring people as opposed to now where they take them to the emergency room and have to stay sometimes hours at a time until somebody can get checked out. In this situation, the way they have it set up, somebody will be able to get it. An officer will be able to get in, get out in about fifteen to twenty minutes. Which will just put them back out on the street, help them to be instead of sitting on a chair in a emergency room somewhere, which often we discuss this, the emergency room is usually not the right place for some of these folks anyway. And they told me that there's a ninety day currently a ninety day wait for a psychiatric bed in the city of Birmingham. So this will be a huge help. And we're just really excited. They're hoping to be open. Probably it's going to be late January. They were supposed to have opened in November, but as we all know with construction these days, those things don't always help. So hopefully late January, they'll be opening up and they are going to have a ribbon cutting with, I believe the governor is going to be there. And then last week I was honored to swear Mr. Brigitte in as the president of the Jefferson County Clerks Association, taking over from Ms. Salter. Could you roll it, Brian? Yeah, so that was that was really nice to be able to do that. And I just want to wish everybody a very happy holiday. Hope everyone is going to be able to spend time with their family and friends. And I will set special issues, which I believe I just have one item, other than we need to put the Maniscalco issue on the table. But I will not actually be there because my family, we're taking our children to London after Christmas, so I'll still be out of the country. And Ms. Andress has graciously agreed to chair my meeting. So but I will set special issues following Public Works. And that is it.
Thank you. Ms. Nelms.
I don't have anything, but just Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody. Look forward to seeing y'all around and and thank you for all our goodies.
Thank you. Ms. Andress.
I will set P and D to follow special issues and that's all I have. Happy holidays, everybody, and congratulations to Robert.
Mr. Harden.
No comment. Merry Christmas.
And and Ms. Salter, yours has already been done, right?
Oh, yes.
Or do you need? Do you need more?
I was I wanted to have the picture there and I want to thank Miss Smith for for being willing to do that. And, you know, I just both said, I just can't really see Robert. Does he really want to do this? I'd be president, babe. And I was like, maybe you either you underestimate my abilities to persuade because I just rolled off as president and I needed a president. So Robert, I get even these messes all the time. So but thank you, Robert, for being willing to serve and I promise that I will help you in it there. So if I got even to it.
Well, I don't have much other than to echo the thank yous to all of you sitting up here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for everything that you do and do so well. And we we all appreciate the opportunity to work with you and everything you do for the city. It is greatly appreciated. But I also like to thank all the department heads that we work with so frequently. Particularly some that we work with even more frequently, like Mr. I'm looking at Mr. Smith, who I talk to, I think daily almost and Mr. Squires and certainly Mr. Brigitte and Ms. Salter and their staffs. We couldn't do what we do without y'all. JJ's not here, but certainly couldn't do what we do without JJ. And lastly, Mr. Kendrick, thank you for all of your work for the city. We greatly appreciate it. I don't think we recognize what life will be like without you someday and and so we but it we we everyone will find out exactly how much we we should be thanking you every day for the work that you do for the city. So with that, happy holidays to everyone and we'll see you next year.